Hello.
Hello. Yeah, yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can, loud and clear.
Oh.
We just wanted to make sure that you were good to go before we let everybody else in.
Yeah, hang on, let me check my mute button and then I'll see if this works for.
Can you get him a little louder?
Yeah, it sounds really great.
Can you get him a little louder for us to hear?
It's as loud as we can get, I think.
George, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, it's just not, not real loud, not as loud as if you're sitting here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Dan, could you hear George okay?
Oh yeah, I can hear him fine.
Hear me fine, okay.
Alright, very good. Hey Sloan, we're testing counselor's sound, let us know if you can hear us.
That was, oh yeah.
Sloan, let us know when you can hear us.
I can hear you.
Perfect, we're trying out a new USB microphone today, so.
Oh cool.
Oh, I can hear y'all.
Perfect.
Dan's not gonna be here?
No, Dan's not in person, so, which actually works out, then, because we, we don't have the, the new camera yet, so it's actually only like you three, the center three that we can see, so.
Focus it more, probably with these guys, because they're the counselors.
Yeah.
I'm just a name caller.
Alright guys, I'm gonna mute us for just a little bit until we're more ready to go. Michael, please.
I'm gonna go to the desk and make a phone call to my office in case she has any troubles.
Okay, perfect.
Smile pretty for the camera, you guys.
Okay, I guess I'll pound. Let's call this meeting to order, roll call.
Mayor Linda Calhoun.
Here.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Here.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Here.
Counselor George Wardle.
Here.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Here.
Perfect, if you would stand and join me for the invocation and the pledge. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for this community that we live in, we ask that you would be with us as we go through this COVID-19 pandemic and please give us wisdom as we make decisions that are so important to our businesses. We ask that you would just protect our community, protect the, the workers that are involved right now and the ones that are, and our guests as they come into town, be with us tonight, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, we're doing things a little bit differently tonight, we have a new microphone, so we're hoping that you can hear us and if you have any issues, please send your comments into Zoom and then we can address those. Okay, first item is approval of the agenda, I would take a motion. For that.
I'm actually approve the agenda for the regular meeting of Tuesday, April 28th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, roll call.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Counselor George Wardle.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Motion carries, the next item is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on the March 24th, special meeting March 31st, special meeting April 16th, and special meeting April 20th. We can do all that at once, if I could take a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor George Wardle.
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington.
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Motion carries, okay, next item is employee recognition of service and Catherine Billingsley has been with the town for five years. Here we go, we have a certificate of award to present to Catherine in recognition of five years of service to the town of Red River. Catherine is now our motor vehicle department clerk, so when you see her, everybody say congratulations and thank you for staying with us for five years and tell her what a good job she does, so we will make sure that she gets her certificate. Our next item is financial report and approval of expenditures.
So the GRTs received in April for February, under construction, were down $25,949. So now, that leads to 87.17%. Retail trade is down $5,064, 5.84%. Real estate is down $8,452, 47.46%. And accommodation and food services down $759, 2.17%.
Dana, can you speak up, some folks are having a hard time hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Should I turn this towards her?
It's already gonna speak around her side, so if anything, can you speak a little?
Gross receipts tax is down for the month, $16,523, 8.72%. Year to date, we're up still, $16,882, 1.03%. In lodgers tax, three lodges not reporting, for the month, we are up $5,388, 7.63%. Year to date, we're up $30,509, or 4.98%. And as of March, the 75% of the budget is used.
And just so everybody is aware, that GRT that we received was February.
Yes.
That we received in April, so that's a little discouraging that we were down 8.72% for February, because we know we're gonna get hit for March.
Right.
And we know it's gonna be way down for April and way down for May, so. Okay, if you guys want to go ahead and review expenditures and see if anybody has any questions.
I had a couple of questions I had marked off.
Okay.
Copper Law Firm, it says review of swagerty files. What that's about?
That was, I think that's planning and zoning.
Okay.
So it wouldn't have been to do anything with swagerty, would it?
No.
Okay.
And then we did Romero's excavation for rental and labor and parks for $5,000.
That would be the pond over at High Cost, we did the dredging.
Okay, we did that last fall or the spring?
Well, we, combination, combination, but we finally got invoices this last cycle. And then also to the, the co-owner, I guess if you will, at the pond pitched in a portion to have that cleaned.
Okay. One more question from Zeke's Auto Supply for several things, that has an engine and something else for $7,500.
What's the check number on that, I can look that up.
80245.
245?
Mm-hmm. 245, yeah.
Is that for the cinder truck, then we have to buy, we have to buy a motor for that?
Um, we had to buy the whole new cinder, certainly, yes, that could be it.
I thought we had to get another motor for that, but McDonald, that's a, that'd be, that'd be kinda high for a motor for that.
Channel steel, 660, and then we had an eight-foot Honda engine, stainless steel, and a nine-foot Stryker gas motor, so that's, that was $6,800.
So is that for the cinder, cinder truck?
That's what it sounds like to me.
And then I had one more, and I'll be satisfied, we had replacement signs throughout town, replacing wooden signs for $2,000.
Yes, or the wooden posts are rotting, and we, and he upgraded them to, to, I think metal.
On the street signs?
Yes.
He's still in the process, I know a couple aren't.
Any other questions? No, if not, I would take a motion for approval of expenditures for March.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington? Counselor Sloan?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Can we get closer?
Counselor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Counselor George Wardle?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, alright, we'll move on to committee reports and start with public safety.
Okay, we did have a Zoom meeting. Our agenda was department reports, and Eddie Saint reported for the fire in EMS. Said there were 36 fire calls in March, or, no, I don't think that was fire calls, but calls in total for March. Twelve were transfers, 23 were EMS, total call volume was 122 from January 1 through March 31st. They were still working on trying to get some additional staff, they rehired Chase Ingram who worked for the department before, his field work as EMS personnel for two days a week. And we're still looking at getting some more intermediate courses, try to get some, another, one or two ENTs. They've implemented new procedures for the COVID-19, they're only using one ambulance for any calls that would maybe be related to that, and then they are cleaning it carefully with ozone generator after, after it's been used. Most of the fire department training sessions have been moved online except for attack tests, which they're doing two or three times a week for the fire chasers, and Ron Burnham helped them get a online training for the recurrent of the red card with wildfires. Marshal's office reported that call volume is down, because there's nobody in town. Dispatches screening all calls for COVID. They have screening protocols in place, department is trying to limit contact, on calls made to distance. Trying to keep everybody safe. Yeah, department has one officer application in process, they're looking at that's positive, we've also got one new dispatcher in the hiring process which also looks positive. The application to the state, the DOT to allow ROV access on Main Street has been submitted, it goes to a state committee and then, and there it gets to the head of the DOT, which at that point they'll let us know what they've decided. They've got their new police vehicle has arrived and they had it in just recently to get it decal and it's looking pretty good. And the department was still planning for Memorial Day activities as usual, although we don't know what's gonna happen since we've canceled all the vendors and, and activities, so, but we may still have some traffic show up. And they're not gonna suspect, expect much help from the sheriff's office this year, they're, they've allocated where the contract requested a patrol request, so they don't have extra personnel for, for us. And no further business, we adjourned.
Thank you, Public Works.
We did have a meeting. Isaac with the town reported they are doing some Memorial Day prep, I don't know how that's gonna change now, I imagine we'll still do some striping and spit things up for summer season. They're working on water leaks around town. There's a concern, they, when they go to take the trash, there's, there's long lines at the dump, I don't know if that's because of the staff has been cut down with this pandemic. So we're dealing with some extra time there, the, the trash truck with getting the new engine is still in process, I think it's getting close. And they're blading roads when they can, so that's the report from Isaac. Russell reported that the Copper King Trail roadway project is underway, looks like they're about to do some asphalt, if you've driven by there. The Phase Two water line extension project, we received three bids and I think we're gonna look at that later in our packet, maybe to award one possibly. And the water tank project, we received three bids there and we've already awarded that one, so. Sidewalk replacement project, preliminary engineering, and the, the task order was issued, and the total cost for the project's $269,000, so Tappan will do a presentation, I don't know if that's gonna be tonight about this.
You work on Phase Two?
No, for the sidewalk project.
Oh, no.
So we'll, we'll wait to hear back on that, I don't think that's, that's done yet, so, and we were adjourned.
I, I had a question, I was at that meeting and I had a question for Isaac at that point, I noticed they had torn out the fencing at the tennis courts and he said they, he thought they were supposed to take that all out so they can move the dog park over there, but I don't think we're moving the dog park, so.
No.
That's, so they've quit, Karen, they've tore the fencing down, but they've left all the.
Last year, Northern Paving had given us a quote to resurface
Right.
that area, and so, but they needed to take down fencing around it before that took place, and then winter set in, pretty much is how, what happened. But it was never mentioned that a dog park was gonna go back over there, it was just for resurfacing.
So are we gonna continue to resurface that tennis court and put the fencing back up and have it usable or not?
Well, I know that the Parks and Rec Committee have been talking about different ideas over there, one pavilion, but as long as it be asphalt, the area, you can use it for, you know, we need to check on costs to do, to actually resurface for a tennis court or pavilion, you know, they do have a master plan, so it's just what we were trying to do was get ahead and try to at least clean up that area and make it less hazardous for, for the community that wants to go out there and play.
Do you remember what the cost was to resurface?
I wanna say it was around $38,000.
So we felt like that was kind of reasonable, and I think people
For the surfacing.
For surfacing, just to asphalt.
That's about what it was for the skate park, it was around 30, something thousand.
And that way people could at least use it, we could shop it for pickleball and tennis, so it would be usable.
But we'd have to put fencing all back up, I mean.
We would.
But it doesn't have to be that tall, maybe we can do it a different way.
The thing, the reason why we had to tear the fence down was because there's, the rooting system, they're, they're gonna have to bring heavy equipment in there to do that, and plus there are the machines to get, to do the servicing.
Yeah, you get them in there and get to using it.
So the fence.
George.
Yeah.
George, and part of that fencing was already damaged, if you'll remember back when the tree back there in that back corner all fell down.
Yes.
So that whole, that whole section of the fencing was all destroyed.
Okay, I just was curious what was going on with it.
That'll go right into Parks and Rec, Dan.
Wish, well, we didn't have a quorum, but anyway, George, to elaborate a little more on that, about there, at the park, yes, that would be a, an excellent opportunity for us if we did want to make it a pickleball court. And again, like Stevie, we wouldn't have to have a real tall fence to get that accomplished for that, and again, that's where we headed on the future plan to look at and see if we were gonna go that way, or if everybody was more in favor of using it as a pavilion over there, so. But yeah, probably pickleball court would be something we could get done and have it up and running pretty quick.
Okay, did you have anything else, Stan?
No, that's it.
Okay, we'll move on to lodgers tax and economic development.
We did have a meeting, the SCIA gave out their proposed tentative dates for the summer, the Chamber had their proposed tentative event dates for the summer, obviously, things have changed since we've had this meeting last. Most of our time was spent discussing special event funding requests, which we discussed all the requests, but we're gonna hold off on bringing that proposal to council until we have a little bit more of an idea on what's going on with our current situation. We, the conference center lost a few bookings, obviously, in the spring, so they're down a little bit, some things were pushed, some things were canceled totally. And then there was obviously an, as expected, drop in rental occupancy at the, in the town housing, just because of the end of the season, so that was to be expected though. And as far as marketing goes, we are in the process of the new marketing company, RFP, that group will be meeting, the RFP deadline has passed, the submissions are in, and the committee to review those has been reviewing them and will meet sometime soon to discuss the options moving forward, and that was it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under Mayor's report, um, first of all, I just want to remind everybody that's listening into the call and all the employers to make sure that your employees go on and file for unemployment. I know there are some that haven't started receiving that yet, I talked to the department today and they're saying that calling is not necessarily gonna help because they're so swamped, they cannot take calls, but make sure they go on and they need to certify weekly, even with all the funding that's out there, you still need to certify weekly. If you do call, you want to call on the days where you're the social security number, so they do have it designated for days to call, and be sure to backdate it to when your income stopped. And then the other thing, on Sunday, they opened it up for self-employed people to apply for unemployment, and you want to backdate that to whenever you quit receiving income. I asked him about the, the seasonal businesses that we have in town, and he said to go ahead and, and apply as of the date that you would have opened, so that you can be in the queue to start getting that, and even self-employed will have to certify on a weekly basis. But be patient with them. Apparently, when the money comes in, they will pay you for everything that you have coming. I'm having weekly mayors with the New Mexico Mayors Caucus. We're just talking a little bit about what's going on around the state, what the different each municipality is kind of doing and how they're dealing with the whole pandemic. Last Friday, I had a call with the Enchanted Circle mayors and we talked a little bit about. Our plan for moving forward and what each community was doing. We know that Taos has canceled all of their events. The mayor from Eagle Nest was going to see about working with the governor's office to maybe get the the lake opened. I know Angel Fire is trying to get the golf course opened. So everybody is, I think we're sort of in that preparation stage of what we can do now to get ready to open. I found out today I was put on the governor's mayor's task force and we're going to meet Thursday, her economic recovery task force. So we'll see. What what she's looking at there. There's mayors from all different. All different aspects, some that that want their towns completely open, some that want them completely shut. So it'll be an interesting mix to see how that comes together. Yesterday I did have a Zoom call with the community. We it lasted for a little over an hour. Just giving them an opportunity to ask questions about the economic recovery task force proposal. That we're going to look at here in a little bit. The town is looking at some really positive ways that we can. Help keep the community safe as far as providing hand washing stations on Main Street. Making mask and sanitizer available to our guests. And just just however we can be involved to make sure we can help keep it safe. We're also John with the fire department is working with businesses on making sure. Everyone is aware of their occupancy rating because as of now, the reopening or the the current regulations are all based on. Occupancy and going forward, we expect that. So we want to make sure that everybody has a real. Good picture of what their occupancy rating is. I'm getting calls and emails almost daily on we're planning on coming up in July. Can we come? You know, so. We're just saying as of right now, we're at 25%. Restaurants are all takeout and none of the shops are open. So except for the grocery store. So we're just fielding calls. I'm sure you guys are getting them in the visitor center. And just trying to get really good information out there so everybody is aware of what the requirements are. I think that's all I have. So planning and zoning, no items. And then we'll move into new business, which is consideration and approval of the proposal. And it's a little misleading because basically. The governor was requesting proposals from municipalities to see how we could. Could reopen on on some kind of scheduled reopening and still maintain. The requirements that are in place and make sure we keep our employees and our local people safe. So as you look through this, just realize that this is a changing document, that it's going to be. It's going to be constantly updated. As far as the dates, those are just very. Not even preliminary, they're just hypothetical dates, you know, as. Some of the business, many of the businesses feel that it's very important. That we don't lose July and August. You know, that that we need to do everything we can to salvage those two months because because we know April and May is always slow for us except for Memorial. June is decent. It pays the utilities. It pays our employees, but it doesn't put a lot of money in anybody's pocket. But July and August are critical for our survival. So if you guys, the way the way I structured this task force. Was to pick someone from each sector that I felt like had a really good grasp on that sector. And then we just went through and talked about ways, kind of came up with a. Suggested best practices for all businesses and then got a little more specific for each sector. So. If you guys want to just look through it, I'm hoping you've had a chance to read through it. And we even talked about events and since we did this, we all know the family encampment has been canceled. So I'm welcome to suggestions.
I mean, this this list we have is is just a, again, it's not a. If you vote yes on it, I mean, it's still it's not fixed rules.
Right. This is just, you know, I guess it's mainly do you guys approve of us moving forward in this direction?
This is what we're going to show to the governor.
Right.
Linda, just to clarify, are we asking for special permission outside of what the state regulations are? Or are we saying that this is what we would like her to keep in mind when she is coming up with her regulations?
We're saying this is what is a community we're able to do to follow her regulations. And as she goes forward and looks at reopening businesses, this is how we will continue to keep everybody safe this summer. So we're not asking her to. Do any kind of special exception for us. We're asking her to recognize that we are different than Albuquerque. And that we feel like we can get buy-in from our entire community. At whatever point she's ready to start looking at opening up, that we're we're on board and this is what we're ready to do.
Okay, thanks. I also, I just wanted to, I don't see anything in here about any of the parks outside of events being held in the park, but. I think we all know if you walk along the river any evening through town or go out into Mallette, there's large family groups. There's tons of people walking around and I mean, it I I see different businesses and things that are covered in here and. But I don't see anything for just our public spaces. Has that been something that you guys talked about?
We did not, we did not talk about that. I I wasn't aware that there was a problem with that.
I mean, I don't think it's a problem, but I just, I mean, if you just, if it's a nice evening out, there's tons of people out and about, so.
Okay, and we can certainly put something in there about parks because that's, you know, anything we're going to put in about parks is going to go back to. Whatever the current recommendation is by the state. And I think part of where we're taking care of that is. If we do decide to put in some portable toilet trailers for people to use. Along with the portable hand washing stations and sanitizing stations.
Still would like to see if we do something with our lodging that like there's, as you mentioned, you know, most of our lodges have outdoor access, not interior accesses. And then half of our stuff is is property management homes and they're all spread out. They're not close to each other. So why do we limit that to 25% when when they're they're a mile apart, you know?
And there's, yeah, I agree. And there's definitely two schools of thought in town. Part of the people are very adamant about. We follow the guidelines. We don't do anything to encourage the governor to open us up any sooner. We just, we just stay the course. And there's another group that's saying. We should be able to get open sooner because of that reason, you know, we, most of our activities are outside. Our people are are not in large groups of shopping malls or movies or, you know, areas like that. So. The position I think that the town needs to take is we support the governor, we support the requirements and we are going to follow that because we have to. But. On the other hand, we feel like we could stay safe. We feel like we do have outside entrances. We don't have heating and cooling. Central air, central air for the the virus can go through the ducts. So there's, there's two schools of thoughts, but I mean, I guess we have to take the position that we are going to follow whatever the requirements are. While we're giving suggestions of how we can be safe. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of, but I was wondering if that's that's an item where we could ask for a different exception, you know, if she's not putting everybody in the same cookie box.
Yeah.
That we could maybe say, you know, our lodging situation is much different up here.
And and we tried to clarify that. I have, I have verbally expressed that. But I think the word exception. Gives a lot of people pause for concern. They don't want us to ask for any exception because they feel like that's making us, putting us in an unsafe position. You know, I'm, I feel pretty confident that the governor is going to begin to ease restrictions. I don't know when. And I'll know more Thursday after we had that meeting.
So Linda, my question is, based on that. If she starts to open things up, rather than if we start at 25%, would we? Being again, that we're so tourism based and like George said, all the housing and the property management people. And the lodging, everything is spread out so far. And more than likely, the tourists are coming anyway. If we started it at 50%. And then allowed ourselves to, for some of the businesses that weren't comfortable. I mean, leave that option up to the businesses if they chose to stay closed. Or again, based on all the practices that we're wanting to put in place. So that we could allow a few more opportunities for the businesses to accommodate the tourists that are going to be coming. I think if we did something that way, that might open it up a little sooner, but give the option. To our business owners. So if they want to, they can. If they don't, they can. Use their own judgment on how they want to move forward, on how fast they want to open it.
Right. And and I hear what you're saying, Dan, but. The way, the way it is, we can be more restrictive than the state regulations. We cannot be less restrictive. So we're, we're held to whatever, whatever percentage. The governor and the health department approve right now. You know, she's open to input. She's open to looking at different areas of the state. I feel like she's going to look at the southern southeastern side of the state or the eastern side of the state. And the small mountain communities, a little bit different than she's going to look at Burnaleo County. And the Navajo Nation because those areas are the ones that are getting hit so hard right now. So we can never be less restrictive than what they do. We can just give suggestions on what we think would work for our community.
That's what Dan and I are kind of saying. Can we put that as a suggestion to her for our for our to consider for?
I think we kind of have with.
We did. If if you'll look at the end of this.
We're looking at 25%. Occupancy occupancy for lodges, 20% for non-essential businesses. And then by May 20th, which is five days after. The date she has now to go to 50% for non-essentials, 75% for lodging. So that gets people going for. Memorial Day, whatever's going to happen there. None of us know. And then June 3rd, 100%.
And so that's what we're suggesting.
That's our suggestion.
We're saying we we think we could handle that as a as a community. Knowing that businesses that aren't comfortable can certainly stay closed.
They can stay closed every day of the year if they want. That's their choice. They can stay home and they can stay closed.
Yeah.
So we can't tell them to, you got to open because we're going to be busy. So if anyone doesn't feel safe after the restrictions are lifted. They can remain closed and inside if they want.
And again, you know, these were just just dates that were pulled out trying to get us open. By June when people start coming.
The Eisenhower is asking if the proposal is listed anywhere that they can get access to.
I thought we'd send it out to everyone. It hasn't changed. But we can, we'll certainly resend it if we need to.
Hey, Linda. So I guess what I'm hearing and seeing is that this is just kind of a list of of best practices. For guests and businesses and. You know, our local people to follow within the state's guidelines. But what are we thinking about as far as education of these best practices to both locals and tourists? And and then who does enforcement on whatever these or whatever state guidelines fall upon? Is there any? I mean, so I guess it's a two-part question, the education and then the enforcement.
Well, I think we'll get out the message through Facebook. We'll make sure that all of our lodges lodges have. Good pamphlets to hand out very much like they do with the the ROVs. We don't know how effective that's going to be, but. People are coming from areas. They're used to dealing with this. So they, they know what's going to be expected of them and we're just going to have to be. On a heightened awareness to. Remind them, encourage them, you know, masks are recommended. They're not required right now. Social distancing, hand washing, hand sanitizer, just best practices and just just get the word out the best we can and keep reminding. And as far, well, and as far as occupancy within businesses, that's going to fall on each business owner to take care of that. But as far as enforcement, right now, the state is encouraging us to let state police take care of that. We don't have much of a presence with state police. So I think it's going to fall on the business owners to just make sure they do what they're supposed to because. We don't have that. Strong about, we have a strong marshal's office, but they're small in number. So they don't have time to be running around looking at if there's four people or there should be three people or, you know, if there's. Five cars at a business when there should just be four cars. It's going to fall on on us. The community is going to have to come together and commit to making sure that we keep each other safe. You know, if there's a blatant, if there's a blatant. Violation and you see a group of 75 people up at the park having some big party. Of course, at that point, we're going to call and say that's not acceptable. But it's just going to take some common sense. Does that answer that, Sloan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is just approval of the direction, approval of the of moving forward with a proposal. With best practices. To the governor, to the governor.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
So these are just best practices with suggested dates, but we'll be following what the state's doing.
Exactly, exactly. We were doing what she asked us to do.
Yep.
She wanted, she wanted suggestions from communities and and this, this is where we started.
It could change tomorrow.
Yeah, it could change before we all go to bed tonight. You know, we we just don't know. We're just, we're just trying to be proactive. I think. I think if she were to open up, you know, if she were to call a press conference tomorrow and say. Come Monday, we're going to start doing this. We just want to make sure that we're prepared. Okay, let's do roll call.
Council Sloan Hovington?
Yes.
Council Dan Foley?
Yes.
Council George Warner?
Yes.
Council Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And guys, we will keep you guys updated as things change, as the document changes. And I did get get a copy of a of best practices from Reed for the. Disc golf tournament that's going to be happening June 6th and 7th. Now, whether that's going to happen, who knows? But if it does, at least they have a plan in place for that. And along with the chamber events for June, just some suggestions on how we could do it if it were to be allowed to happen.
So Linda, can I just, I guess, question on the same note is, how are we? I know we've stopped all kind of advertising and marketing and that, and thanks for that video that you put out when this all first started, but. Are we, what's our, are we have, do we have an active message or a clear current message or are we just kind of relying on what's out there? What's our current message?
For our Facebook, what we're doing is just posting pictures of the area just to keep brand awareness out there. Our message really hasn't changed since the one I put out the end of March or first of April. So as soon as anything changes, we'll certainly be putting out another message.
Is there any way that we could put out a message saying exactly that, like nothing's changes, nothing's changed? But as soon as it does, we'll keep, just to give, it just seems information is key to people at this time. And just the more, or even if we don't have any new information, just to. Put something out there and say, I don't know, we can discuss, but I don't know, I just, it just seems information's key at this time and even if we don't have any new. information's key at this time. And even if we don't have any new information, just to say that and that we're working on it and we'll keep you posted.
We can do that.
That's a good point.
I think that's, that's a great idea. And you know, the one thing that is a little bit different because in that first message, it was pretty much implied that if you drove in, you'd need to quarantine for 14 days. That's a recommendation. It's not really a requirement. So I know we do have some second homeowners coming in. I had one call today asking what was going to be open, that they were going to be driving up. So, you know, we still are going to recommend that they self-isolate. And, you know, if they need to go to the grocery store, if they need to come into town for certain things, of course, we understand that, but we're going to, we're going to recommend that they aren't just out and about all, all through town. And that they wear masks and that they social distance. So I'll, I'll work on putting something together and try to get it out the next day or so.
Okay, thanks. I just think, even if it's just like a weekly, just that, hey, still nothing is new. These are our current. But just, just if we can just keep being in front of people with a message, even if it's nothing new.
Do you think the videos are more effective than just putting it out on Facebook?
I do.
Okay. All right. I'll work on something. All right. So now we'll move on to award ITV number 120 for the Water System Improvements Phase Two. And we did receive three bids. The lowest bid was Anchorbilt. Do you want to talk about that again? Oh, okay. Tapping, are you on there?
Yes, ma'am, I am here.
Okay. Do you want to address this? I know Anchorbilt came in about $250,000 less than the, the next bid, which seems really nice, but if you want to just address that a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. So we did receive the three bids. Anchorbilt Incorporated was the apparent little bidder. So we went through and evaluated their bids, not only in the, in the pricing, which was favorable. But we also looked through the conditions of the bid, which they needed to comply with that was advertised. In reviewing that bid, we did have question to a few of their items, work experience and in particular, one of the federal forms that is required in the submission because this is federally funded. In the letter, there's a series, it's a very lengthy list of attachments, but we had a number of emails and calls back and forth with Anchorbilt, asking them to provide information what is requested post-bid, which is allowed in the instructions to bidders. And in that information, they, they provided some clarification, one to the federal form. We submitted their, their solicitation for the disadvantaged business enterprise. And that went to the Environment Department, who's administering the technical side of this funds. And they approved and concurred that that would be acceptable. That being the process they use to solicit the disadvantaged business enterprises. And then the other attachments include qualifications. Generally, Anchorbilt is a relatively new, newer company to utility construction. Their, what they call qualifying party is a person that has extensive experience in utilities. What has occurred is this qualifying party, the person with the utility license has his qualifying experience under the Anchorbilt's general license. And in their work experience, they are doing projects, building type construction projects, but in-house. Now doing utility work and site grading. So the work experience, if you will, for municipally, municipal utility publicly funded projects is thin. However, their, their qualifying party's experience is quite extensive. In reviewing the, the bid forms and corresponding with Anchorbilt, we do, they have been responsive. They provided the information we've asked for post-bid to try to assist in making a determination to their qualifications and experience. And in their response, again, they, they've been diligent. And if we were not to award the project to them, we do feel that there would potentially be a protest and have not found anything based upon the, the pricing and the support documents that would provide them as a non-qualified bidder. So if the bid is awarded, it is lower than the available budget. And we would have a contingency as we work through and through the process, just be working with them to make sure that we're complying with the federal requirements. And obviously in construction, we're, we're getting the construction quality that is expected for this project.
Okay, thank you.
They, they, they don't have the ability to come back later once they've started and go, oh, we missed that. So we need to add that in now. I mean, they can't add stuff to this. I mean, we can make change orders, but they can't make a change order, right?
I think they have, Tapping, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have, I don't know, weekly meetings, but you do meet with the contractors to see if they're following to, to your specs. And so I don't know if you want to answer that question, if there had to be, if there was going to be a change order, how that would take place.
Yeah, since they're that so much lower tapping, it's just, they, they may have missed something. And then they would want to come back later and say, oh, we missed that. We're going to have to add this much to get the project finished.
Certainly, if I may, Mayor and Counselor, the contract is going, as it's set up, is a unit price based contract. There cannot be a change to the unit prices, unit price amounts they provided for each of the items. But the contract does have a provision if either party, you know, the owner, the town, or the contractor, Anchorbilt, elects to submit a change proposal for something they feel is, is a necessary change. That could be submitted and we would review it to see if it is covered under the contract or if it is not. At this stage in the project, as far as a change order, if there's an underground condition or unknown circumstance that may lead to a change order, that is something that could pop up. But otherwise, it would be during construction if we have to alter a route because of existing utilities that are in experienced or something like that. It would be based upon the unit pricing in the, the contract. So if we, we had 10 feet of pipe or have to add a valve for some reason, the town, whether it's administratively or you know, through operations, they want to add some additional items that are in the contract, that would of course come for us to review. And then we would consult with the town to whether, on the town side, if you wanted to initiate it, it's an order, order, if you will, to the contractor. If the contractor brought forth, the town has the opportunity to provide their, their position on it. And, and then ultimately, if it is a change order, it comes, comes to the town for consideration of approval.
But Tapping, when you go through this proposal, the one from Anchorbilt, there's nothing in it that they missed. There's not like a $200,000 deletion, not deletion, but just something that they omission, a $200,000 omission that they're going to come back and say, whoa, we missed that. So you know that this, this bid covers everything that the other two cover.
Yes. And I would say it goes back to the unit pricing. Each item may have a different price reflected in it. But they have a price in each of the items.
Okay, perfect.
And Tapping, this is Steve. So the qualified parties are going to be on this project, right?
The qualifying party is listed as the project manager.
Okay.
And the superintendent that, from what we can tell in the documentation, has worked with the qualifying party for a number of years as the onsite superintendent.
Great. I'm good.
And then you, and then you guys have somebody onsite as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. All right. If there's not any more discussion, I would take a motion to award ITV 120 to Anchorbilt.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussions on this? All right, if none, roll call.
Councilor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Councilor Jared Warner?
Yes.
Councilor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Councilor Sloan Hovington?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Dan. Now we'll move on to public comment. And I'd like to remind you, if we could limit this to three minutes per person, do we have anybody that wants to comment?
Nobody has asked for a public comment. Karen Kelly did comment that she agrees with Sloan about the, the PR messaging updates. So that's it so far?
Oh, okay. And when did we put this out? Okay. Okay, I think that's perfect. So April just brought in an update that we can put out on our Facebook, just an update from Red River. We are under stay-at-home orders until May 15th. We will continue to follow all guidelines set down by the state. We will provide updates as things evolve. Visit redriver.org for additional information. Stay healthy and stay safe. And we will hope, hopefully see you soon in Red River. So we can, we will put that out on Facebook along with the video that I will work on. And we will just continue to update people. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Any other comments? All right. If there's no other business, we will be adjourned. Thank you all.